Okay, I can call the, that might be me. You know why it's wrong? I did have one, I'm looking at the date.
Oh, I didn't have.
It feel better.
April seventh.
April seventh. I have to call the Dunbar Board of Selectmen in to order for April seventh, twenty twenty two. All three selectmen present. The town administrator is present, according for the citizens of Dunbar, Mr. Leo Martell. And he will, he'll transfer them to, uh, Ms. Linda Nickerson, and she holds it to YouTube for those who wish to see our interesting meeting. Okay, gentlemen, the first thing, we're gonna, it looks like a small agenda, but we're gonna be talking about three things that I wish would take some time. First item is gonna be, uh, the approval of the old minutes. We have a few sets to approve, and do I have a motion from anybody?
I make a motion to approve the seven P M. regular minutes for March thirty first.
Has amended, yes?
Has amended, yes.
Well, the second, the motion. Any discussion on those minutes?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have non-public session, someone make a motion to approve those, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the eight twenty-four non-public minutes.
I accept.
Has amended.
I accept him.
Any discussion on those?
Nope.
Here or none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we've run those seven minutes. Eight twenty-four minutes and now one nowhere to be found.
Non-public?
Correct, I have the eight thirty-six minutes, I'll take a motion on those if I can keep them forward.
Now, there's just one set of minutes, I'm obviously, I don't know if I
Eight thirty-six is the wrong data.
Okay.
I might interject.
I don't have any notes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Eight thirty-six. So, no, are you all in favor?
Aye.
That's what I thought, it's okay. Uh, the agenda's okay, but the empty town business is correct, so.
I'm sorry, as long as you didn't do it to me, Leanne, it's fine.
All in favor of those non-public minutes?
Aye.
I always thought she was gonna get me on the date.
I heard it changing in like four different places, so.
Two sets. I'm gonna open up a public comment.
Yeah, um, Mike, uh, when you're, um, letting the, uh, people know about the video, you can just tell them to go to the town website.
Okay.
And that way there they'll even know that there's a town website, you know?
That's a good idea.
Well, yes, it could be true. Yes, well, I mean, it's on there too, but
But it's a, it's a link, the link is on the town website.
Yes, there's so many people that don't, don't believe that the town even has a website, they don't know it.
So, no.
Yeah, so we know it's
Maybe it's not necessarily.
Well, you know, same here. Uh, the other thing was, um, last week you guys talked about, uh, damage to some gate at the recycling center.
Yes.
And so the towns paying for the damage.
Wasn't the gate, I think it was just a section of fence, was it?
Okay, fence or something, right.
Yeah.
We didn't know what was
The town is paying for that?
Yes.
And why wouldn't any person who hit it have been saying?
It was our town.
It was our town people.
Okay. I didn't hear that part. I was just curious, you know, it's like, thinking about it, and it's like, why, why wouldn't we pursue them? I think we would have if it was case.
There has been
I, I, and that was a thing I felt was, maybe nobody saw who did it, you know, so I said, maybe that's what was the case, I don't know.
Well, yeah, points well taken, I think it's about this time it was, uh, it was an accident.
Yeah, right, no, I understand, and it was kinda hard to the insurance is paying for it back, basically, right?
Yeah. We have that, some small scratches in the drive-through down there that we don't
Well, I, I, yeah, I understand small things, nifty things, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, yes?
Nope.
Okay, uh, closed public comment, and we're into the, uh, um, town business. All right. We got, last week we had Dave, uh, help me facilitate the delivery of the contract, the contract draft in the eleventh.
Yep.
And I, uh, was, uh, we were waiting on some minutes from the town clerk, mm, not quite received yet. So we just, I copied, I had, certainly need to copy the, uh, motion as it was approved. Then we just, we sent that in the email, we sent that for review. I followed up with the gentleman today, and he sent us an email, uh, regarding this.
The town attorney, right?
Town attorney. And you can, there was language in there, which was, uh, uh, added by, uh, contractor, which was not included in this bid. And you know, first of all, I wanna say that a contractor is trying to, he's gotta make money in order to do business. But the thing is, what, what's on there, and, uh, normally we would have a, sometimes we'd have a contingency con, con, a contingency clause in there, so if prices went up, we could absorb some of the pricing in a contingency contract. We didn't do that this time, I think it was in an effort to keep the bid low.
An effort to keep all bids low, we didn't put any contingencies on any contract.
Right. But the thing is, what he did, and a contingency usually have a cap to it, and this one doesn't have a cap, but he put language in there, which essentially says that the town is responsible for all price increases in materials, open-ended. Thing is, we don't have access to his books, we don't have access to anything he has. It's, he's, he's an independent contractor, it's not a general contractor, it's working for him, and so, it's, the attorney felt, and I felt, I felt that was a risk to the town financially, that he could come in and say, well, I think it's that we have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in prices. And who's holding the bag? And, and so that's, that was a concern of mine. And, uh, so, with that concern, I, I talked to the two vice presidents in a conference call today. And, uh, they were really, uh, they said, you know, we haven't had this type of atmosphere for thirty, forty years, yeah, I know, I know, I know. Um, but I said, they're not comfortable with removing that clause, I said, well, who is comfortable with it? And they said, well, they don't know who be, I said, well, when can I speak to him? He said, it'll be back Monday. And that's a risk, and the thing is, now, I'm gonna give a scenario, okay? Uh, that's one scenario, just materials. We have a certain amount of dollars left in our maintenance line, albeit low. If it exceeds that, where do we default? We have to tell the department, we have to lay people off to get the money, we are at risk financially, because let's say the materials come in double what we have left on our maintenance line. Towns, we'll have to hold the bag, we can't use a reserve, we can't call the special town meeting, because it doesn't fall under the auspices of emergency, and so we, we get sued. And that, and that's not fair to, to the taxpayers, it's not fair to, uh, uh, not fair to the contractor who wants money for, because he's trying to make a living. And so it, it's, it's a challenge there, that was one thing. And I kept on thinking about a few other things, and I talked to, uh, one of the persons who are gonna be doing the inspections, of their, the structural inspections. And he said, Mike, I think it's, did you, you have anything in there, I talked about lead paint and asbestos removal, but asbestos removal and lead paint sometimes require a state-certified contractor. Who's on the hook for that? If they, it's an old building, it's a hundred years old, they're gonna find, um, some lead paint in there, they're gonna find potentially, and with piping, maybe some asbestos in there. It's gotta be removed, and who's gonna be on the hook for that? Another potential expense. If we had a contingency, uh, we would be on, I think, that could be like insurance policy for us, and we're self-insuring ourselves for that, we didn't plan for a contingency. That's a, that's a, that's another thing. And, let me see. So, I, I was sharing this, some of my concerns with the vice presidents of the company, and they said, well, Mr. Chacon is gonna have to chime in and give us some feedback on that. And the thing is, yes, I want to make some money, but remember, we don't have a huge, uh, reserve, uh, where we can draw upon in case we have to augment this. And the thing is, we can't, we can, legally, we can put more money towards a project. We can't take money away from the project, but we can put more money towards a project. Um, we can only take money away from the project when it's not spent after the building's done, to our specifications. But those are some risks I, I see coming down the pipe here.
I would suggest, um, on Monday, when we call Mr. Chacon.
Yes.
Plan a sit-down meeting with him.
Yeah, I think that
Um, because I wanted to let you know, uh, some of the background, they took some time to get us that contractor draft, which is only a draft, not a
Exactly.
And the reason they send a draft out on A I A contracts is to see if anybody has any changes, like I think the architect made one.
Yeah.
One change. So that's the reason for sending that A I A draft out, then they send a final, once everybody's in agreement to the contract. Since COVID has started, these contracts that used to never have any of these clauses, have caused, even if I was gonna build you a house right now today, Mike,
Right.
I wouldn't do it without a cost increase clause, because things are changing weekly.
Oh, by the day.
So, I would have that in there, and that being said, what the contractor did is this particular contractor did the original bid for us.
Right.
And then he did another bid when we had to find a set of plans from Dennis Myers. So he knows the job very well. So, since the town meeting passed, he went out to all of his subcontractors.
And reaffirmed the bids.
Reaffirmed the bids. Three of four came back, as I had stated at previous weeks' meetings.
Right.
And they, um, they had altered their things, and then they found ways to get around that, either the supplier, like
Or change, and change in the color.
Right, yeah, change the color roof to black instead of white, which we already have black. Um, in doing that, they now feel that they can supply, once our contractors sign contracts to their subcontractors, and get them to hold the pricing. So they did that two weeks' worth of due diligence.
Right.
And so, let me finish up one more thing, so that being said, they got a call this week even from, I think, John, I asked John to share, but I'm not sure if he did. But, um, Brooks, Brookside Mechanical, which does the E R V, called and said they have a cost increase. During this week's time, they were able to call, uh, their supplier, got them to hold the pricing, and so for right now, there's no increase there. But without them getting contracts out to their contractors, we're leaving ourselves kind of a window here.
And, and I agree, time, time is of the essence, and the thing is, that's why I don't wanna, that's why, I made two calls to the, uh, in fact, three calls to the lawyer, he returned two calls to me. And, uh, so we're in communication, and I think he did his part. I'm ready to meet with, I was ready to meet with these people today, but the thing is, uh, I think the idea of meet one on one is a good idea.
A sit-down meeting with them, and I think you guys can come to terms, and
Right.
I'd like you to handle that end of it, because you're
But, but you share my, you see my concerns.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right now, the town, we haven't, as written, it, it's an open-ended checkbook where they can put a number in, and
You could put a cap on there, a very limited cap.
Right, but I don't even, even to put a cap on there, it was, it still says, well, I'm gonna raise the price up to the cap. I think we should sit down and negotiate it, because there are some other things that I'm concerned with them. Again, we have a small, uh, shall I say, a small budget remaining, uh, maintenance, and it may require, it may, asbestos removal, may require, may require paint mitigation. And the thing is, I wanna keep enough where they may, when they dig down to the foundation, they may say, this is, now this foundation really is gonna need some really major footings, more than we ever thought. And we gotta make sure we have reserves, at least to cover those, unattis legitimate, I'm, which not really can be seen right now, those legitimate costs which we have to absorb. Those type of costs I can absorb, I don't wanna just give them a false cap, and then have them just raise rates to the cap, and then we're stuck on the hook for it. I'd rather keep that in reserve and have them come up with a bill for asbestos, have them come up with a bill for it, and, and keep it as informed on the way.
So just so you know too, the, um, the siding on that building had been replaced, so there shouldn't be lead paint on that
Oh, and the lead paint, it was, it, no, the thing is, for the record, it was lead paint.
Previous.
Previously, and the new paint is all, uh, good paint.
Yeah.
Um,
And then in the cellar, I haven't seen any wrapped pipes of asbestos on, so, I mean.
But that, that adds, in any contract, it's what, it's hidden, and the thing is, you can't expect them to, uh, you have to anticipate that. The other thing was, um, I think it was Mary brought out about another item, Mike brought up in an email, you all, we all read on it, a portability. I mean, they were just, I won't say that the current contractors are, and they're not trashing it, but they're not leaving it as pristine as their entering building is.
The, uh, Chacon, you'll find this part of the A I A contract has that.
Okay, but that was one thing, I just, Mike, Mike was all concerned about that, yeah, I'm concerned about that too, but I, I think to me, that's, that's a minor issue.
But no, you're right, they shouldn't be using inside pass.
No. So those are some of my concerns, I share that with you, bringing both up to speed. Um, tell me if you think I'm wrong, you're not even a public here, but if you think I'm wrong, um, let me know. Aileen chiming to his town administrator, uh, I'm trying to do the right thing, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a, you have more experience than I do, I'm trying to be methodical in this.
And that's why I think if you meet with them, you'll sit down and negotiate it to a reasonable.
But I thought, um, I thought your comment was, was great this afternoon, I just heard that we got an email from an authority, and, and and he said, uh, my authority tells you to make sure I put those things in the contract, so I don't lose my
This is on reality, I get the other end of those, the lawyers, he's telling me to put all those clauses in, to save my behind on increases, because we are getting increases, you know, weekly, sometimes twice a week.
And that's, that's why, to be fair to
So it's tough.
To be fair to the contractor, the more we delay, the more we're putting him at risk of not even being able to complete the project, because he, I want to have the money to, to make a profit on it too.
And like, just so you follow through, when Bob hooked me on that three and a half years ago, I read through the prior contracts, the one, uh, one point two four seven
Yeah.
There was four hundred thousand dollars worth of management fees in that first contract, from the job super to the inside office staff, four hundred thousand dollars worth of management fees that I contracted. And then they had contingencies for the town, they had contingencies for the contractor, and contingencies for the architect. So when we got to this and made it bare bones, I pulled all the contingencies out, because I knew we had a building maintenance, but if there was anything minor that came up, we could handle.
Yeah.
So that was hap, that happened many years ago, and that didn't just happen.
Oh, no, I, I understood, I understood, no, I think is, um, and I, I, I recall the conversation that you said, I wanna pull somebody's contingencies out, so it's not so exorbitant, the town was gonna go like this to it.
It was balloon the other way, if what was happening.
Yeah, it was excessive.
Yeah.
But the thing is, uh, but it is gonna be ritual, that, uh, uh, I don't wanna put off, we have a town maintenance line, the thing is, uh, I know we, we cut it back big time, and then we restated at least twenty-five percent more back to it. And if there's any of the large projects, who, I, I think, uh, I think we had a comment from the public last year, from last week, rather, if there's a big project, we may wanna wait till the fall before we execute to make sure we have enough money to anticipate, uh, not cost overruns, but just unanticipated construction issues. That's, that's my, that's my goal. Uh, but the thing is, I want Mr. Chacon to meet with me, but the thing is, I, I don't think it's fair to the town to have an open-ended, um, uh, price increase, where he just, uh, and the thing is, we don't have access to his books. And as, I'm not accusing him of dishonesty or anything like that, Dave, he spoke very highly of him, and he's a town resident, but the thing is, I'm representing, we are representing all the voters and residents in town.
And I think it's good to put a dollar figure on it, and then also, uh, you can also stipulate it now that you've seen the two or three bids that he has on the item too.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, so that's, that's where I'm at with that, I just wanna make sure, you think I'm going in the right direction, you know, tell me if I'm right. And, uh, so I can
Take a simple conversation, get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, but I think it's, I thought, I thought dealing with the vice presidents, uh, they, they're all, that's basically drew the line in the sand, I said, I need to speak to Mr. Chacon about this, and they agreed with me.
Well, I think that this isn't only happening on this contract, it's gonna happen on all of your contracts, I mean, this is a small contract for them.
Yeah.
When they're signing several multimillion-dollar contracts throughout the state, they have to kind of watch it on all of them.
Understood, but the thing is, uh, I'm hoping that he has some, uh, as a resident, he's kind to us.
Yeah, I think he will, I think that, uh, they've been already doing, New Hampshire housing never allowed that in their contracts before, this is the first year they're allowing it, because there's no getting around it.
Okay. Any other comments, I'm gonna take a public comment, you have to say a public comment. All right, um. Oh, and just, just, you know, I was even thinking out of the box, I called, I called the town administrator and asked her, she's telling me what I can and can't do, I said, where do we need money, can we just take it out of the reserve, out of the, uh, emergency fund? No, no, and hell no, she did say hell no, but the thing is, that's what she, the thing is, there is this mechanism for doing that, that's gotta be an emergency, can we have a special town meeting to withdraw it? The answer is no, because D R A would give us the blessing, whether it's a, uh, a D R A, it's a
Yeah.
Do you, whether we can do a special town meeting, it usually has to be under an emergency, so the thing is, uh, emergency would seem like the building burns down, don't get any ideas, but that would be an emergency.
Roads wash out.
Roads wash out, or something like that, okay. So that's that project, and I'm gonna continue on, so I got a, a call in, I'll have to call in to Mr. Chacon for Friday morning, uh, Monday morning, and I'll hook him there, their office is closed on Fridays.
They give you this number, Richard?
No, they do not, I'll get it from you later. So I'd say publicly for you. Okay, continuing on, um. Yes, uh, that's two appointments, that's, uh, if you wanna make a motion, leave, I'll give you appointment papers out.
I'll make a motion for the Conservation Commission for King Bennett for twenty twenty-five as an alternate. And also the Town Hall Respiration Committee, uh, Janet Casey for twenty twenty-three.
Five seconds.
Any discussion on those members?
No.
Here or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't notice, but the selectmen can swear people, and I swear in, um, Chuck to the plenary board last night.
All right, Chuck?
Yeah.
Um, since we're on the town clerk, um, I saw an email that was sent a, a second time, a request for, uh, by the town minister here, for a simple request for assistance. I'd like to make sure she responds this week, there's a, it's a key document that's required for the audit, and, Leanne, could you, uh, could you?
I was gonna say, she did respond.
Okay, she got, she got, did you respond to you, I saw the, just the message, the second message, but I'm, she gonna do it?
I didn't see the response unless it was after
It's in the email.
Okay. Okay.
It's right there on the top of it.
Hmm. It's in the bottom.
Third in the bottom.
Fit from the bottom.
Okay. You got it now, okay. Aileen, I would take care of it, thank you, okay, I just wanna make sure, it's one of those audit requirements?
It's a single-page questionnaire that I have to distribute to, to the urban select page, um,
Is she, is, are there any other outstanding ones?
Nope, the town tax clerk has already turned this in, the office staff turned it in.
She did respond, okay, I'm, that, I stand corrected, she responded, I, I say thank you to the town clerk for responding for that.
Well, we just can't get the finalized print, we cannot release the draft until he gets that.
Okay, I'm gonna go right to mailbox items now, gentlemen.
Okay.
Okay, uh, first item, Don Larson scheduled the next vaccine clinic for April twenty-third in Dunbar Elementary School between eight and two P M. Participants will receive a constantly needs a gift certificate. How about cash? No.
I would've gotten a gift certificate, probably there before.
Yeah, no, it's cash is nice. Thing is, that, I, I, I give Don kudos to that, but remember, the, the C D C is recommended for those people who are probably, there are some specific recommendations, it's not recommended across the board for everybody.
Fifteen older, right?
Fifteen older with conditions.
With conditions?
Yeah.
So be, beware.
So, just to remind you, or that when he goes and holds these clinics, he does utilize the, or use the stanzas.
But he should coordinate that with
Yeah, I'll make sure we bring it up.
Good. Okay, we have a, uh, Ritz and Clearsons, uh, revised deed for enasement to add five-acre Kimball Pond property. Conservation has needed the deed because of many federal agencies involved, it's, we have to sign it, notarize it, and send it off. Leanne, you ready to go inside?
Yeah, I'll do it after you.
Okay.
So you, the board didn't sign that some months back, and
And then make some adjustments.
Yeah, the lady from that, um, division was here during that meeting, but he, they rejected the, uh, the the deed, so we'll just
Need to put that in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the next item is a letter to School Street Cafe, or a selectman have received complaints regarding School Street Cafe customers in town parking office, park, town office parking instead of the School Street Parking Cafe parking area, or a selectman asking the owners of School, School Street Cafe to direct their customers to their apartment lot to prevent congestion of the town office lot.
Does that work for you?
That's simple and to the point.
Simple and to the point, yeah.
Okay, from, uh, welfare director, Janie, a capital, uh, region food program is to span out for fifty years. Uh, impact holiday, uh, Christmas holiday food basket program for Dunbar residents. Focus groups are planned, but no date's been set, and they're looking at creative ideas to help conserve our community. That is one item, second item is we have two inquiries for welfare assistance, and case management service fuel, for fuel and utility systems were provided. And the intended of a welfare meeting this year presented by the Council of Housing Strategic Plan. So it's, basically, it's an update, please, if you wouldn't, I'd make sure you read it.
I did, and I thought, you know, I wanna thank Janie again for sending those to us, because we never got those before, they're very helpful for us to
We've never, over the years, never get, so, Janie's, uh, thumb beyond, but that's great. Okay, um, an auction's coming up.
That's the one we told Woody about?
So, actually, it's
It's always the way, you talk about it, and comes to, goes to
Could you please make sure that gets sent out to, uh, Trash Management?
He has been copied, so would it be wise for me to just ask him to use that source instead of his other, he was thinking about maybe something
I think let him try both, because I, I think we gave him the, the range to get whatever money he could.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, a minute's a disposal, uh, I think is, I wanted, one of the, well, inserting words, I was gonna put disposals slash resale of the items, because I wanted more than disposal, I had to get some money for it, I couldn't, yeah. But I think it's, uh, he knows what the good, and so the intent is to get the, some money for it.
But should we make sure that
He gets
The class gets sold by that, then, that we, and have it sent there?
I think, yeah.
Some month away, so
Some face
Give him, give him a month to get
Get something going.
Give him Facebook marketing places.
This would be the fact, the, the fact, uh, uh, some fallback.
Something doesn't happen somewhere there.
Okay, um, library directors, uh, the reading program is from Mary, she likes to use the bandstand in the lawn area on the south side of the lawn for their summer reading program, I have no issue with that at all. So it doesn't interfere with any construction projects going on there. The second, the second thing is June twenty-ninth, they want a new touch-up truck, no prizes given that day, no prizes.
That's a weekend day?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday, twenty-ninth, between ten and eleven, ten, it's a one-hour between ten-thirty, eleven-thirty. It requires the school, uh, parking the school street and in the town parking lot, Wednesday, June twenty-ninth. I, I don't have a problem with that.
Again, as long as she's not in.
I was gonna say, the only thing is construction.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't, I think that would be limited to the parking area over there, so I think it'll be all roped off.
Yeah, I think so.
With caution tape, I think it'd be all right.
Agreed.
Make it work.
All right, I'll let him know.
Then, uh, Mike Cummings, okay, uh, just what I alluded to earlier about port bodies, I think I'll add that to the agenda as we go forward to the, uh, pre-construction meeting.
Yeah.
Topic to make sure we bring up there. And the thing is, I can't see him running in here when that was occupied, Leanne, can we use your?
They always have the ones, I just, it's pretty standard practice of construction.
Okay, um, did, did we get a, a email from the, um?
Actually, we have a bill in there.
Yeah.
Requesting payment, and at the time that we received it, um, when John went and did the inspection, there was no pump visible.
I think you would see the name.
Um, the guy actually called me today.
He's stuck, he's stuck.
And I said, cool, the lead's with the pump, he has a pump, and his truck on his way to deliver it to install it, so
Yeah, well, he can install it, he just put it in the basement.
Yeah, well, I think his guys are there working on it, two guys.
So how much, uh, how much, uh, have you paid out, Leanne, and, uh,
Uh, it's
Write in the yellow, yellow sticky here.
If you look at that little, um, spreadsheet, it's might be even
Right on the, right on, I really miss Mike, he hasn't right now.
Right here. This is the contract, this is what he's requesting.
Okay.
These are number three of the payment breakdown, so.
He's received three payments?
Yeah, one is for ninety percent materials, seventy-five percent later, and the remainder is the pumps, so we just got the pump today.
Okay.
If we approve this, then there's ten thousand five hundred and four dollars.
I verified with him today when I had him on the phone to make sure that he had the tanks, because when the doghouse comes off of this for construction, he can put them down in there, and the reason he's waiting is because of his leave here.
Does he have a, a tight?
Not on, on his, but his supplier has them in their warehouse ready to go.
Okay. Absolutely.
So.
So, we're keeping approximately, how many, how many, how many, ten thousand dollars reserve then?
Yeah, is that, I mean, it's certified, so, would you say that's adequate for a contingency for
I think that is, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm okay to just release those funds.
Okay, the census report, these two others?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he's doing, uh, the new portion of the building with the other contractor, because we gave them their contact information. So, he'll be a subcontractor of the other contract eventually.
Okay, um.
Agree with the board.
Yeah, this is F Y I copy, this is the voice, just the waste, we, if we wanted to do something with our waste, I'd let them know that the poll, I think we could, I don't think there's a restriction on that. The only thing is, um, my, my only pursuit, I, I sent an email, I asked, I directed Eric this week, and sent an email to Waste Management to kindly decline their services, but we'll keep them in the future if we have need of it comes up, we, I said, we're gonna continue to use our truck.
But it was, it was neat to hear from John Trotter, because he works for a much larger town than
Yeah.
To hear that they do have issues with Waste Management, so.
Yeah, so, but, so the thing is, uh, as we get, David, what I directed towards you as a liaison, as we get, uh, short on personnel
Yeah.
And we need to stop that, I would recommend that we, uh, authorize some pickup by old management, just like you expect them to, to help pick up some and we need to stop that, I would recommend that we authorize some pickup by bulk management, just like you expect to, to pick up some regular trash. Now keep Woody on site, especially if he's got new people there. And Woody should be directed, not asked, directed to use bulk recycling to pick up our trash, especially during the shortages we anticipate for the next sixty days.
Um, while we're speaking of that, um, I've asked Lynn to involve me into the, um, new employees that would like to have a, you know, to come in and see us for an interview.
Okay.
I'm gonna be part of that, 'cause I think we've been way too lackadaisical getting them hired and onboard.
Right, and this gentleman, I thought he like almost declined, because he didn't realize that he only can work one to two days a week. That's a win-win.
And I think, and listening to it, I think he was almost talked out of the job, and I wanna make sure that people aren't talked out of it, are endowing.
Okay.
Cause we need some bodies down there.
Great, so are we gonna contact that gentleman tomorrow first thing?
Absolutely, um, I just got tied up with quite a few things, like with the auditor, but I, I totally agree with you. Um, I've always, you know, recommended to Woody that if someone can't work, but only Saturdays or only Wednesdays and Tuesdays, he's gotta be flexible.
So if, um, if, um, Lynn gets the future ones that come up, I'm gonna get involved with them right away, do the interview, get them.
Because again, these people are looking for jobs, and jobs are plentiful.
You can't wait a week or two.
No, I, I agree, I agree.
And I, I think that guy would take a job, had we got to him quicker, and we just, you know, gave him a week to think about it, ah, nah, well.
I think, I think we should still get back to him, saying, you know, if you're gonna work two days a week, or even a one day, one week, two days, one week, that's a win-win.
I mean, I don't make the time, we need the employees down there, so.
Right, and as Woody says, it's not about the money anymore, it's about finding, just getting people available. Okay. Okay, um, that's the mailbox, so I'm gonna open a public comment at another time.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to town minister, and please talk to us.
I just wanna let the board know that the following application has been, uh, completed and signed and finalized. Um, I'm still working on the reporting of the ARFA grant. Um, I've already, um, participated in almost, uh, two and a half hours of videos, because they're federal, federal, uh, websites. Um, they now have my facial recognition, uh, uh, my photo I D, and there's a lot of detail that is involved before they even allow you to get in there. And for communities that receive less than ten million dollars, the door only opened equal first for us to enter into the website to, um, upload our, our information, so it's, once I get there, it's gonna be quick, there's only one expense, but-
Then you're gonna have to do the first one fifteen and the second one fifty, or you think?
No, 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 I have to do just the seven thousand dollars that we all authorized. The others, money stays there, it's good for five years, so, um, we don't have to do anything.
So next year, you can do the balance?
The whole, uh, balance, correct, yeah, so we're working on that. Um, the auditors are working with Eric and I to, um, adjust the schedule for the audit for a couple of days. So they're coming in, uh, eighteen to nineteenth, uh, um, eighteen to nineteenth of April, and then returning on the twenty-fifth, one day, and then, uh, finalizing any, um, on the June sixth and seventh, so that's what the twenty-twenty went on.
As you explained to me, just for the record, eighteen to nineteen, this will be data gathering session.
That's correct.
Non-decision or discussion, make it bad.
No, they don't need any trial balance, 'cause Eric and I are still working on that.
And the twenty-fifth is the follow-up, they need other stuff.
That's correct, uh, so now that they have all our data and they're, we're now set up as a client, they can easily go through all of our invoices, scan all of our information, and then get the, um, added information they need from the library, the town forest, and any other, um, trustee, the trust funds, financial, uh, information, and it's more of a gathering information, and they take it back and they come up with a selection.
I actually think it's good that we're, um, going to get the audit company for one day. You know, the other company kind of hold that, and I was gonna see, there may be some new things at the other.
Seconds of eyes.
Yeah, seconds of eyes.
Yeah.
I think it may be a positive review for the town, we may change the way we do some things.
Well, what, um, what I like about the individual that I'm working with now is, um, when he worked for the Lanson needs, um, six or seven years ago, he was always a positive, um, advisor. He would, you know, instead of saying, you know, doing it this way, we're gonna make this change to correct the journal entry, and, um, move forward so that you learn the correct process, and, um, they've just been really, really helpful, and they're really, um, it's a, a very stressful time in my office to go through an audit, not that there's anything for us to be concerned about, but there's a lot of things that we're trying to do on a day-to-day basis, and then we have to maintain, um, you know, um, upfront and positive, um, work relationship with the auditor. It's, it's gone well, I think, um, there's more information in the, uh, management letter that I was surprised to see very, very detailed, um, this year. So I think using those tools, we'll be able to go forward and always find ways to improve our roles.
Okay.
What else do I have? I have the ARFA, the audit, the bond. Um, I think that's pretty much it for right now, I'm very busy, but we're good.
I'll go to Justin.
Go ahead, I know that you're-
Tell you a couple of things, I met with the plan board, and Mike has asked me to, to give them an overlay of the Dunbar Town Hall Restoration, um, entrance to the library, and, uh, it was a very positive meeting. Um, they thought it might have been done a little earlier than that, but they weren't in any negative way. We talked about parking, potential future parking. Um, we talked about a bunch of different aspects of the building, but what was nice is I gave them the last three and a half years layouts of the decisions and why it's on that side of the building, 'cause it's seventy-five foot distances between the two emergency exits, and, you know, I gave them the ins and outs of the building as it was kind of developed and the reasons why, and, and I think it went over very well. They were appreciative of it.
And I think it's, um, one thing we've always learned, just you know, here with me and Dave, where, that when the school project went out, the planning board was kinda like left out cold.
Yeah.
And then you say, it wasn't for decision, it was more of a courtesy to keep the planning board informed what's going on at the town, so.
And they have, and the school had a lot of exterior parking situations and walkways, and we do have as much here, so, um, and we're, we're very limited in what we have here, and I did talk about, you know, potential future use down the road that we're working on, and hopefully some of that comes through, but it was a good meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate you doing that.
I did one other, uh, Mike, I met with the library trustees, they asked me to come in, um, to their meeting as well, be on the Dunbar and um, Town Hall Restoration Committee meeting and kind of be in the,
In the-
the construction chair and the no, and, uh, I walked through all the phases of the construction, we're there, we had talked a little bit about possibly having that, um, entryway into the building after thirty days, and I told them I didn't think that was possible. With the contractors parking on this side of the building, the building being dug out. And something we hadn't thought about earlier is the cymbals, where they grate up to the building, aren't done till the very end of the project. It wasn't possible to do that and have any entry for handicapped people through this side of the building all during construction, I thought that was easier.
I, I think would be, uh, delaying construction too.
Yes, and, uh, so they were understanding to it, and they asked why we hadn't thought about that, and I said, you know, we hadn't thought about the parking, we hadn't thought about the grass entry, we hadn't thought about, um, a bunch of different things that add up to not being feasible to have it safely done, so, um, we talked through having the drop box be put over here by the mailbox. And Mary's gonna bring books out to that, and she's prepared for it, and they all understand now. And they were happy that I met with them, only so they can plan their whole summer out. Mary had already planned into the reading outside in the gazebo area, so, um, I think it was a very positive meeting. Took a lot of good questions from them, and I think that it, it's gonna make it so that when we do have the construction meeting later on, that, um, most of their questions are answered.
Uh, just an FYI, okay, the construction meeting could be as early as, uh, if we get a nice positive meeting with Mr. Chouin, it could be early, maybe next week.
Yeah. Um, is every day the library's closed, or, uh, uh, closed in the morning where they can meet? Where Mary can make it?
I, I'd have to give you, I don't have the schedule.
If you could give that schedule to Mike, only 'cause Mary would like to be there and, um,
So you want it when she's open, or not, when she's closed?
When she's closed, so like, if she opens at ten, they could do it at nine in the morning, so.
You say the mid-morning or early afternoon, that's what-
And Bruce, one of the trustees will come too.
Okay, great. Thing is, uh, the key players for the, uh, I asked, uh, Jeff Trexler to be there, uh, building inspector to be there. Um, I want the library trustee representative and Mary there. Gentlemen, you are both invited to the meeting, and I, I kinda welcome you, Dave, and things will announce, put a, a, a meeting out there. The thing is, I think with your knowledge, it'd be worthwhile to have you there.
So we'll have to post that, because Mike and I,
Right.
I'm gonna be in there late to see Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee.
And just, just, Justin, this is an example, when, uh, the board would be, we had to post that, so that why, when two selectmen, they, you can carry on business, but it can't be business that we normally carry on when we have a core. That was, you can't start a conversation about something else that's going on, without including the other selectmen, and we're with the public. And we gotta be vigilant with that.
And we don't typically vote on anything on the side either, we-
No.
It's always, uh-
In fact, we have courtesy if, uh, if one selectman's out, if we can delay a week, we always delay his courtesy.
Yeah, as long as I know the meeting twenty-four hours in advance, and I think that's category for hosting, so.
So I think it was good, they were very appreciative of the library that they know now to expect, and I, and I kept saying, well, once they're out, and I said, twenty weeks is out to out, I said, we hope to have it shorter than that, but who knows, you know?
Right, the thing is, if it's, what's uncovered, if they uncover something, we could have a, a issue.
Yeah, I think they still have time in there for that too, but I think, uh-
Mr., okay, also, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have one more than?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's down here. Um, Mary, in walking up the front steps, saw some debris by the front steps. So I'm gonna ask Lynn, when she calls for the spring cleanup, if they can pick up the little crumbles of, it was a, crumbles of cement that got mixed in the snow.
Okay. Well, by the way, I did share with you how they came back and made it correct. I was very pleased to see that Bob was very surprised and pleasantly surprised on that.
I think that was a really, really good company that we used there. Um, Lynn, do you think-
It's in the front of the building?
Yes, in the front, do you think it'll be, uh, fairly quickly, Lynn, do that spring cleanup?
Uh, I'll check, uh, we haven't, I think it's the end of April that their first installment, so, and we think we need time now.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that-
Cause there are a bunch of lawn chunks out there by the gazebo, I'd like to have kind of put back in place before we start tearing up the rest of it. I think that's it, right, Lynn?
Yeah.
Thank you.
As a reminder, the board, please mark your calendars, at the twenty-first, there'll be no meeting on the twenty-first, unless it's, uh, uh, an urgent meeting.
April?
April twenty-first, no meeting.
Beautiful.
And don't, don't let it go to you yet now, it's on summer schedule.
April twenty-first.
I'm gonna change just the summer schedule after that anyways.
So April twenty-first, I get to delete this.
You get to delete the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, uh, see what else do I have? Uh, I don't have anything for the envelope. I think I covered everything for the, uh, for, for the, uh, town hall restoration. I, again, I still have some concerns, it's not set in stone yet, but I think it's, I think to be fair to the contract, I wanna meet with them as soon as possible, and hopefully iron some well. And, uh, and that's where, that's where I'm going with that.
If you think I can facilitate the iron out, then it might be in there either, Mike, or whatever you want.
Okay, um, Lynn, would you put an announcement for that on the radio for Friday?
No, we don't know the, the date.
It's Monday.
Or once you do.
No, Monday is just, oh, you wanna come?
I would have Dave come.
To your discussion with Chouin about this contract?
Right, I'll be my lead, but Dave will be in my support.
Okay, so I'm, are you okay with that, Justin?
We can make the whole, I'm not a darling, just so I don't make that end up, unless it's a whole board then.
Yeah.
Just something in the knowledge, yes.
The thing is, I don't know what time on Monday, what?
Um, set it for ten A M.
Ten A M, Monday?
Like ten thirty.
And if you keep ten thirty, ten thirty.
Ten thirty A M.
That's too early for me, Dave?
No.
Special meeting.
No, it'll be better than getting tied up in one other meeting.
Okay, I'll, I will give a call into, uh, the manager, Johnny, put it on his calendar.
Maybe you can text him and just say it.
I'll, I'll get his manager, his, uh, his manager to put it on his calendar. Location?
Okay, Monday.
Right here.
And Monday is eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Here at their office, he don't work, but.
He would be convenient.
I think here is convenient, and the building is right there, look out.
Right.
That'll be if they need some ideas, we can talk to each other.
Right, right then and there, the thing is, my, my goal-
I don't actually do it, it's there either.
Well, the thing is, I just want him to, uh, look at some of these clauses in there, and I don't wanna be out on the dry, and then the voters looking, Lee will be leading the charge. Tar and Ferley Kaminsky, Tar and Ferley Kaminsky.
Okay, just so the board are aware, we're having a special meeting, they have the transcribing minutes.
All right.
Uh, so I'll make sure we have some things here, or myself to help.
Yep, I may, uh, go ahead and put a note to that up here, it's, uh, ten thirty Monday, right?
Ten thirty A M.
Four eleven. And this is just a contract review meeting?
Just, yeah, we're not gonna approve any con, no approvals, this is-
Contract discussion.
Contract discussion.
Drive contract discussion.
After it's finalized, Mike,
I like, the thing is, if-
They'll give you a hard copy, and then you're the only one required to sign it.
Okay, well, again, it's proof by numbers, it's just a matter of facilitating it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, it's good to know. But I think it's, we just gotta clean up some of the language in there, and I wanna make the town less, that was, that is the word recommended.